There we go.
Ladies and gentlemen, good evening and welcome to tonight's city council meeting. And committee of the whole meeting. There's an echo. We're set. City council meeting for July 6th, 2021 is called to order. I kindly ask our city clerk, Mr. Gottgeson, to please take the roll.
Bruno.
Here.
Burkhardt.
Here.
Ruby.
Here.
Caven is out. Kilberg is out. Kasrog?
Kasrog here.
Maladra?
Here.
Marx?
Here.
Mayor?
Here.
Swanson?
Here.
Ladies and gentlemen, we begin our council meetings with the pledge of allegiance. I would like to ask Ms. Jennifer Maluski to please lead us in the pledge.
To the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under one, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Jennifer.
You're welcome.
And folks, you'll recognize why I asked Ms. Maluski to lead us in the pledge, because our first item of business this evening is to consider the mayor's appointment of Jennifer Maluski to serve as city treasurer for the city of Geneva. Is there a motion? So moved. Alderman Marx makes that motion?
Second.
Alderman Bruno makes the second. Any questions? Any comments? Alderman Swanson?
Thank you, Mayor. I think it would be helpful for all of us to hear what the city treasurer is responsible for, or what some of the major duties are. Is there... Stephanie, could you provide us with a quick overview?
Sure. So the city treasurer is a statutory position that was created long ago before the city ever had professional staff, including a city administrator or a finance department. So what the statute says the city treasurer roles are and what they have evolved to over time have been much limited. So primarily, the city treasurer serves on our two pension boards, the fire and police pension boards. They can act as an advisor to the finance director, but beyond that, as far as the day-to-day records and reporting and all of that, that is done by the professional staff.
So would it be safe to say that we do not need an independent treasurer from city
Again, it's an antiquated position. So we had come to the council several years ago to see if there was interest in transferring those duties officially to staff, but you would have to do that by referendum. So, I mean, it's not... The treasurer was never set up to be an oversight. The treasurer was literally the keeper of the money of the city. So now that the treasurer, now that you have a finance department who are appointed by the mayor and the council, the director, and those types of things, you have that position. So literally, the city's treasurer name appears on checks. And again, the finance director can communicate with that person for advice and consultation, but as far as an oversight or an independent auditor-type position, that is not what the treasurer was set out to be.
Okay. Thank you. Jennifer, would you like to say anything? You have to come to the podium, though. We had approximately 14,000 applicants, I suppose.
Or four. I just want to introduce myself. I'm Jennifer. I have been in government finance for...
The broadcast is now starting. All attendees are in listen-only mode.
Hmm, interesting.
Apologies.
I have worked in city government for about 15 years now, including a three-year span with the city of Geneva previously. I'm currently the accounting manager for the Village of Montgomery. So I have worked with Rita, I've worked with Stephanie, I've worked with Pat McQueeney, so I'm familiar with the tasks that need to be performed. And I look forward to working with the team again if I'm so lucky. So that's all I have. I know the excitement's after me, so I'm trying to make it brief. So...
Oh, gosh. I don't know why they're all here. This is... Anyone else from the dais? Or Mr. Kas... Alderwoman Burkhardt?
Hi, thanks for being here tonight. So it sounds like you were pretty busy during the day doing government finance. Can I ask why you decided to raise your hand and do this in your free time as well?
Well, it is super fun. And honestly, I just felt like when I got the email blast saying that they were looking for applicants for... to be appointed for city treasurer, I was like, oh, well. I'm familiar with the role. I feel like I'm qualified for it. I know what needs to be done. I already have a relationship with Rita, the finance director, so I think her and I work very well together. So I kind of feel like it's an easy position for me to kind of slide into and assist and continue serving Geneva in that capacity.
What's your educational background?
So I went to the University of Illinois. And after that, yeah, I went to the University of Illinois.
Yeah, it's your degree.
Sorry, it feels like it's so long ago, but like I said, I mean, from there, I started working for the city of Yorkville. Then I went over to the Village of Sugar Grove, worked there for eight years as a senior accountant, worked here as the accounting supervisor for additional three years, and I've been in Montgomery for a year now. So...
Very good. I'm a proud Illini too, so. All right. Thank you.
Anyone else? We have a motion, ladies and gentlemen, by Alderman Marx. We have a second by Alderman Bruno. A voice vote is sufficient. All in favor of appointing Jennifer Maluski to the city of Geneva post of city treasurer, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Congratulations.
Oh, thank you.
And thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next up, ladies and gentlemen, recognize the 2021 state champion Geneva High School dance team. This seems like so long ago, doesn't it? Now, I just got a text from our IT manager, who's the gentleman in the back room there. Unfortunately, we're having a heck of a time putting the video of when it was announced up. So here's what we're gonna do. We're gonna pretend we saw that, because I think everyone has seen that. Very exciting. Who would like to be the spokesperson for the dance team tonight? Who's the... Are there captains? Okay, who... Okay, let me ask you this question then. Who was the choreographer for the state championship performance? And the coach? How about this? Who's go... Seniors, raise your hand. There's three? Four? Oh, I couldn't see... Okay, who's going the furthest away for school?
Avery.
Avery, is it? Avery, come on up to the podium. Good evening and welcome.
Thank you.
And congratulations.
Thank you.
That's all.
Oh.
No, Avery, I'm kidding. I'm kidding. So where are you going to school next year?
Clemson.
Really?
Yeah.
Tigers, huh?
Mm-hmm.
And why Clemson?
I like the warm weather in the school.
Yeah?
Yeah.
What do you hope to study?
Elementary education.
No kidding? And come back here and possibly teach, or stay down south, or...
No, I can stay down south.
Are you really?
Yeah.
Do you have family there, or are you just drawn to the nice climate and...
Yeah.
Wow, that's cool. So you're a senior?
Yes.
And you've been dancing with the team for how many years?
Two.
Two. So this is your first state championship?
Yes.
In fact, it's everybody's first state championship, I guess, right? I keep thinking those other four years were already so close behind. I had the pleasure of seeing some of the rings earlier your teammates received. That's... Is that... That's new, right? So they've always gotten rings?
Yeah.
Okay, cool. And what does the ring say, other than state champion?
It says fearless.
Fearless?
It says all of our names. It says Dance 2A, and it says state champions.
Wow.
Yeah.
That's pretty cool. And of course, the medal you're wearing.
Yeah.
Now, this year was unusual for a number of reasons. Everything was done remotely. I happened to see the video of your performance, and then the announcement was made remotely as well. The event was held at the high school, and you all gathered, but I heard some hoots and hollers from parents who were able to watch that as well. Did you have a full crowd watching?
No.
You did not?
No, just parents.
Just parents, okay. And that was announced. Did you have any inkling at all that you might pull it off this year?
I was hoping. I was crossing my fingers.
What was the most enjoyable experience you had?
Winning state.
Okay, second.
Um, this year?
Your call. Last year, this year? Are you gonna dance at Clemson?
No.
You're not? Okay.
Um, I'm probably doing our imperson competition for conference this year.
Is that right? And where was that held?
Oh, Lake Park.
Yeah, oh my gosh. And how many... How many teams compete in the 2A?
For conference?
No, for the whole state.
Oh, I have no idea.
Finals, it's like 13.
No kidding? Wow. Is it fair to say that Geneva High School has a dynasty in the dance team rule? Is that right? Well, Avery, this has been a real pleasure. Pretty much running out of questions. Do you have brothers and sisters?
Yeah, I have a sister. She's...
And she's younger or older?
No, we're twins.
Oh, you are? Is sis here?
No, she's not.
No?
She's working.
So you're not close?
No, we're close.
Wow. I always ask this question. Do you know my brother, Mr. Burns?
Yeah, I had him as a freshman.
Oh, that must have really warned me. For what class?
Uh, English.
Was it uh, English, or just English?
It was English.
English? And you're gonna be an elementary education major?
Yeah.
Hanging out down south?
Yep.
And no one could ever take away from you that you're a state champion?
Mm-hmm.
That's really cool. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Now, Avery, you get to choose who comes up next.
Oh, my God. I don't know who to choose.
Do you have any friends on the team?
Yeah, they're all my friends.
Your choice. Your choice.
Who wants to go?
What for?
Who said that? Okay, you're up next. Come on up. And what is your name?
I'm Brenna.
Hi, Brenna. How are you?
I'm good. How are you?
And you're a senior?
I'm going to be a senior. I'm a junior when we won state.
Got it. So that was exciting?
Yeah, it was very exciting.
Yeah. And how long have you been dancing?
On the team, this is going to be my third year on the team.
That's cool. And it... I mean, I know it's competitive, but how many try out and how many make the team?
About 40 every year try out, and there's 20 on the team this year, and I think about 10 on JV.
Okay.
But I think there was actually a lot. There was more like, I think there was 32 trying out this year, but it averages around 35, 40.
And what was the most difficult part of dancing with COVID?
I would say trying to stay motivated, especially during the summer. We were all online for the most part, so it was just really hard not being able to see everyone in person, because we all kind of motivate each other and have fun at practice. So when we're all alone in our basements, it's kind of boring. It gets a little boring.
That was like my brother's high school career. He was in his basement. In case he's watching. Did you become closer as teammates because of that experience, do you think?
Oh, I think definitely. We really appreciated the time that we had once we were back together, and I think we all just really missed each other, and it really showed. And we just became really close, especially now that we can dance together, and we're just really grateful.
And you're gonna be a senior?
Yeah.
Forgive me for not knowing this, but when does dance practice begin again? Or has it already?
It has already.
It has?
And then we go into early March, usually, late February.
Wow.
Yeah.
Are you practicing at the school?
Mm-hmm, we are.
With coach?
Yeah.
And coach has to be present?
Yes.
I've seen some videos of coach coaching you.
Yeah.
That's intense.
She's a great coach, yeah.
That's intense. I'm kind of glad she's not here. She's intense.
Yeah, she works us hard, but...
She does.
That's how we get so good, I guess.
She's a wonderful person.
Mm-hmm, she is.
You know, she wrote a letter for you guys tonight.
Oh, really?
And said, "Don't ask the girls to speak. Strangers speak." And I said, "Oh, geez." She's teaching class tonight.
Yeah, she is.
I know that. So she texted me earlier. She was apologetic, so.
Yeah.
Congratulations to you.
Thank you.
Now, who's next? This isn't like high school. You can't... Just because you don't look at her...
It's Lily Japlin's going next.
Lily? Hi, Lily. How are you?
I'm good. How are you?
Good, welcome. And what year student are you, Lily?
I'm gonna be a senior next year.
You're gonna be a senior as well. And how long have you been dancing?
I've been on this team. This is gonna be my fourth year.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
So freshman year, that's gotta be tough, freshman year to...
Yeah.
Yeah?
It was a lot, but I enjoyed it, and I'm still here, so I clearly must have enjoyed it. So...
Are your mom or dad here with you tonight?
No, they're busy, so...
Understood.
Yeah.
What do you like most about dance?
Dance is nice because it's an outlet for... to let out any anxiety about school. We go to dance right after school day, so sometimes school days are harder than others. And it's nice to have a team to sort of fall back on. They're always there to help you and to encourage you. So...
That's awesome.
Yeah.
That's really nice. And obviously, you provide that encouragement and support to your teammates.
Yeah.
Pretty cool.
Mm-hmm.
Wow. So next year, you're gonna be a senior?
Yeah.
Cakewalk?
Absolutely not.
No? I don't mean the dance. I mean just school.
Yeah, no.
May I ask what subjects you... You're a master of in school?
I really like history.
Do you?
Yeah.
Wow.
Yeah, my dad's a history teacher, so...
Oh, is that right? Where?
At South.
No kidding? Chapman?
What?
What's the last name?
Japlin.
Oh, Mr... Oh, I know Mr. Japlin.
Yeah.
My girls went to South.
Yeah.
Yeah, oh, wow. God, he's old. He's been there forever, man. It's like...
He says that, too. He'll sometimes see former students that are like 30 years old.
Isn't that scary? Yeah. Yeah, like my girls. I'm gonna text them tonight.
He's like, "I've been doing this for too long."
Japlin's still living. Check it out. It's like, oh, my God.
Yeah.
And do you have siblings?
I do. I have two younger sisters, so...
Are they gonna follow in your footsteps, do you think, on the dance team?
One of them already is on the dance team.
Oh, cool.
She's not here tonight, though. She dances at a studio, so...
Okay.
Yeah.
So this is a full-time, year-round commitment?
Absolutely.
Not like, forgive me, the old days where it was, you show up, you get the team, and you know, good luck, Godspeed, and hope to God you don't fall down. This is intense.
Yeah, absolutely.
How's the ring fit?
I like the ring personally. It fits very nice.
Does it?
Yeah. It's kind of hard, though, because when it's hot, you know how fingers swell up? So sometimes the ring gets stuck, but...
Are you familiar with this? Are you gonna order a high school ring as well when you become a senior?
I didn't know that that was an option. No, I didn't know.
Oh, they don't do that anymore? Is it over the...
I thought they just did the shirt, so...
You got the shirt?
Yes.
Oh, is that right? This is mine. Mine says G E D. I'll let that sink into the older, younger people in the ice. Well, congratulations to you.
Thank you.
Say hi to your dad, okay?
I will.
Okay, thank you. And who's next? You choose. Sidney, is it?
Yes.
How are you, Sidney?
I'm good. How are you?
Good. And welcome.
Thank you.
And senior?
Yeah, was a senior, graduated now, so...
And your plans next year?
I'm going to Purdue, so, yeah.
Ever heard of that? All right. Are you gonna be an astronaut?
No.
Engineer?
Nope.
What do you hope to study?
I'm double majoring in law and society and psychology.
Why?
I wasn't going to, but my counselor was like, "Oh, you should do it. Everyone does it." So here I am, double majoring in law.
Everybody does law and sociology. You know, my brother studied really recent anthropology. It was the study of man two weeks ago.
Really?
I'll let that sink in, Sidney. So what do you want to do with that degree, do you think?
I'm hoping to become an attorney for like family or like divorce, something like that.
Oh, that's cool.
Yeah.
Very cool. And why dance for you?
I mean, I started when I was really young, and then obviously, it's just kind of something you stick with if you like it. And then I really just started enjoying it when I got to like middle school, high school, especially high school, because coach is obviously awesome. So... And then you make all like these amazing friends, and it makes it all work.
The coach isn't here. You don't have to say anything.
I know, I know. But she's great, so...
It's all being recorded, of course, but you...
Yep.
So you... Did you start at the Park District level?
Yeah.
And you knew then, I like this stuff?
Yeah. It was the only sport that really stuck. I tried a lot and danced with it.
Well, then share with us what sports you failed at.
Okay, soccer, tennis, basketball, swimming. Oh, I tried a hockey class once.
Oh, did you?
Yeah, no, it wasn't fun.
You ever do any fencing?
No. No, no fencing.
That's the best.
Maybe I'll give it a try. We'll see.
I'm sure Purdue has an extra credit for fencing team.
Oh, I'm sure.
And you're gonna live on campus, of course?
Yes.
Do you already have a roommate?
Yes.
Someone locally, or...
Yeah, she's like an hour away. She lives in Grayslake, so...
Oh, cool. So you met online kind of thing?
Yeah.
You already met and all that good stuff? That's cool. And when do you ship off?
August 17th.
That's about like everybody else.
Yeah.
Have you had a graduation party yet? Was it fun?
Yeah, it was fun. We got a grilled cheese truck, so that was pretty cool.
Better than a tennis truck, I guess, because... Were the cops called to your party benches?
Nope.
How do you know that?
I mean, I didn't see any cops, so...
Officer? Do you recall the address? So favorite memory, Sidney? So you've been dancing forever.
Yeah. I would say my freshman year, when I found out I made the team, I walked in with my twin sister and then Kelly, and then another girl that's not here.
There's two sets of twins on the team?
Yeah.
I'm a twin, too.
Yeah, it's a three.
Yeah, you've had your chance. Really?
Yeah.
There's three sets of twins on the team?
There's actually four.
Four?
Wow.
Oh, yeah, four. Five? Oh, my gosh. Yeah.
So there's five? Four or five? Four sets of twins on... Wow. What did I ask you? Freshman year, you walked in with your twin?
Oh, favorite memory. Yeah. So we walked in all together, and the team was like waiting for us when we walked in, and they all like started clapping and hugging us, and it was just really fun to like know that was gonna be part of something so special.
Indeed, you have been.
Yeah.
And as a senior this past year, you helped create that atmosphere for those coming up, as it were.
Yep.
That's really cool. Well, congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you. And good luck at Purdue.
Thank you.
Okay. Your choice, Sidney. Kelly, is it?
Yeah.
Hi, Kelly. How are you?
Good. How are you?
Good. And Kelly, you're... You just graduated?
Yeah.
And you're off to?
Nebraska.
Nebraska?
Yeah.
Have you been to Lincoln before?
Yeah.
Have you? Do you like it?
Yeah, I love it.
Yeah, it's pretty impressive, isn't it?
Yeah, it's big.
I believe that is the largest city in Nebraska.
Yeah, the rest is corn.
Well, and football home games, of course.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's amazing. So why Nebraska?
I really like the school, and I have a good nursing program, which is what I'm going into.
Any specialty nursing?
Pediatric oncology.
Oh, wow. That's intense.
Yeah.
So the dancing is gonna prep you for that.
Yeah, sure.
Literally. Do you have nurses in the family?
No.
Why nursing? Just...
I've always wanted to be a nurse, ever since I was little. Yeah.
That's really cool. And how long have you been dancing?
Since I was two.
And you knew it, too?
Yeah, I wasn't good at anything else. I was not very athletic.
So how well do you know Sidney?
Very well.
So you guys both tried a lot of stuff, and dancing is it? Care to share your shortcomings athletically?
Soccer, fencing. I did fence.
You did not?
Yes, I did.
Did you really?
I did fence.
Where did you fence?
At the Park District. Me and my dad did it together.
Where's dad?
Over there.
Seriously? Wow.
I was kind of good, I guess, but like...
Does your dad have any wounds to his body for the fencing?
I don't think so.
Do you know what Thrustin' Perry means? So Nebraska, nursing.
Yeah.
You take with it the fact that you're a state champion?
Yeah.
You're gonna wear your ring the whole time?
Yeah. Forever.
What's your favorite experience being a part of the team?
Well, winning state, obviously. And then junior year, we went to Florida. We went to Disney World, and we performed at a bowl game, and that was really fun.
What? What bowl game?
The Citrus Bowl.
The Citrus Bowl?
Yeah.
Really?
Yeah.
Was that... Did you post that?
Uh, probably.
Posted on your Twitter?
Yeah, probably. Oh, yeah, I was. I think it... I think it was posted, maybe. Instagram's a better way to keep up with us.
Thank you for delicately telling me that. I appreciate that. Yeah, because by the way, the dance team post, I think the most recent post is from 19. Unless I have the wrong...
We have two Twitters. The other one, we got kicked out of. So we have another...
You got kicked off of Twitter?
We got like hacked or something on our other Twitter. Yeah.[1490.91]
Really?
Yeah, so we have a new one.
What's, what's the new one? What's the handle?
I have no clue. It's like, it's something. It's like DHS DT or Varsity DT or something.
I'll ask somebody else.
Yeah, yeah, good idea.
What else you do wanna share? What message you have for all the young dancers watching?
Uh, stick with it, it's worth it.
Yeah?
Yeah.
Even through the tough times?
Yeah.
And you relied on your friends on the team to help get you through it, moms and dads?
They're all my best friends.
Yeah?
Yeah.
That's cool, man. Congratulations.
Thanks.
Your choice.
Kyla.
Kyla?
Yeah.
Hi, Kyla.
Hello.
You're one of the twins?
Yes, I'm the other twin.
You, oh, thank you for that.
Yeah.
I could've sworn I just saw ya. So, uh, you are going to be a senior?
I was a senior, yeah.
Okay. That was a joke, see.
Yeah, I figured.
Where are you off to school next year?
Iowa State.
Cyclones?
Yep.
Really?
Uh-huh.
For what purpose?
Um, well, I'm majoring in biology, but I also am on the dance team.
Oh, you are?
Yeah.
Now, again, I have no idea how this works, but are you recruited for the dance team?
No, you have to try out, yeah.
So you've already been announced that you are on the team?
Mm-hmm, yeah. We had, I don't even remember when it was. It was like a couple of months, like two months ago, maybe, a month or two.
Oh, that's pretty cool.
We like did online tryouts, so I descended in a video, yeah.
Oh, that's gotta be tough.
Yeah, it was kinda weird, but kinda nice, make sure I looked my best before submitting it.
I bet. So the family kinda rooting you on is you did so, or did you do it, I don't want anybody near me, kinda thing?
Um, I mean, I mostly did it with Coach. I like filmed my videos with her.
Okay.
But then I like showed my family to make sure.
Yeah.
They thought it looked good, too.
Well, that's really cool.
Yeah.
So with your biology degree, what do you hope to do?
I'm hoping to do something with dermatology.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Wow.
Just interests me.
You wanna go to med school eventually, or just?
Probably.
Is that right?
Yeah, or PA school.
Oh, PA school, that's the way to go.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Not too, not too many years.
Well, plus then you get out and you have a life still.
Yeah.
Life is good, yeah.
Exactly.
Yeah, that's, that's perfect, that's perfect.
Yeah.
You know, PAs are only doctors now, as you know. It's a PhD program throughout.
Yeah.
So that's pretty cool.
Mm-hmm.
So your favorite experience, other than hanging out with your sister when you were a freshman and walking, going, yay, team! Share with us a new one.
Well, I mean, freshman year, we also have an older sister, so all three of us were on the team together. So it was pretty fun, making memories before she left for college, but.
Where's your older sister go to school?
She's at Western Michigan.
Okay, so the Hurons?
What? Uh, the Broncos?
Broncos?
Yeah.
Wow, so all three of the ladies were on the team?
Mm-hmm.
Do you have any brothers in the family?
No, all girls, just us three.
Life is good, man, boys are. So that was most memorable?
Yeah. I mean, sometimes it got a little like, rah, but.
Please. Don't stop now, please continue. I'm sure your sister's tuning in.
It was just a lot of time together, but I mean, that's a good and bad thing.
Uh-huh.
Mostly good, all good things.
So, um, do you, you all get along, of course, swimmingly, as sisters?
Yeah, yeah.
Of all three of you, who has the most talent?
It's all equal.
Oh, good answer. How do you make, how do you make three equal?
I don't know.
I have no idea either, I was just curious. Wow.
Yep.
Congratulations to you.
Thank you.
And be safe at Iowa State.
I will.
Congratulations on dancing for the Cyclones. Now, you'll, you'll dance at all athletic events and then, of course, separately?
Yeah, there's like a competitive part, so like state and nationals usually is what they do.
Is there, is that part of the Big Ten dance program too, or?
Uh, it's Big Twelve.
Big Twelve?
Yeah.
Wrong conference, yeah.
Yeah.
And Iowa is where? I'm just, I'm just kidding. If you can't answer that question. What's Iowa famous for? What's Iowa State famous for?
I don't know.
Great engineering.
Terrific engineering school.
Yeah, great engineering. They have the most graduates who go into dermatology in any school in the country. That's true. Do you know how to spell P A?
P A.
There you go. Congratulations to you.
Thank you.
Should be in a good sport.
Thanks.
Your choice to choose. Hey, Brooke, how are ya?
I'm good, how are you?
Good. Graduated, correct, Brooke?
I'm gonna be a junior.
You're gonna be a junior?
Yes.
Fantastic. Do you have your driver's license yet?
Mm-hmm.
You do?
Yes.
How did that go?
Good.
Yeah? Care to share your license plate with the officer?
I'm good.
You're good? Now, explain this to everybody, you have to have a hundred hours of test driving before your license, or it's fifty?
I think it's fifty.
Oh, it's only fifty?
Yeah, my birthday's in October, it's kind of a while ago.
Sorry to challenge you on. So next year, a junior, ACT, all that stuff?
Yes.
Are those required still?
Uh, you have, you take the SAT through the school.
Okay.
And some colleges, I think, require it, some don't.
A lot of them are just like, forget it.
Yeah.
Wow, and you've been dancing how long?
I started when I was three.
No kidding? And just fell in love?
Yep.
What do you like best about it?
Um, well, obviously, I loved like when I was younger, the way it made me feel as an outlet to relieve any stress going on in my life, and then as I got older, the team aspect became more and more important to me, and then like coming to Geneva, it's like the best team of all, so.
So you moved here?
Oh, no, just like, from like when I was younger, I did studios and stuff like that.
Where did you go to elementary school?
Williamsburg.
Williamsburg? Like Doctor Di?
Yep.
Yeah, isn't that something? Have you seen her puppet collection?
Yes.
Isn't that something? Isn't that fascinating?
Yeah.
For those of you who don't know, she has a puppet collection, it's unbelievable.
Fan her off.
It's awesome. I grew up right behind Williamsburg School on North Hampton.
Oh, awesome.
Huge estate. So, you're gonna continue to dance for the Vikings?
Mm-hmm.
And then afterward, what do you think you might wanna do?
Um, nursing.
Really?
Mm-hmm.
Far out. Now, are you the youngest member of the team?
No.
You're not, okay.
There, yeah, no.
Now, do you have to try out again?
Yes.
So even though you've been on the team, you still have to try out?
Mm-hmm.
And it all boils down to that one day? Kind of, sort of?
Well, there are multiple days of tryouts, so.
Okay, okay. How long do the tryouts last?
It's like three days.
And is it just you dancing, or are you with a group and yourself, by yourself and together?
You learn the dances all together, then you have a couple of days, or you have like two days to review, and then you go in like three at a time and try out in front of the coaches.
Really?
Mm-hmm.
Is that, that's gotta be intense.
Yeah, it's pretty scary.
Like nerve-wracking?
Yeah.
Wow. Now, do you guys still do breakdancing, cause I was all-state breakdancer.
No.
Do you know what breakdancing is?
Yes.
Well, it's, it's, it's coming back.
Looking forward to it.
I bet you are. And the ring fits well?
Yep.
Your proudest memory, besides winning state?
Uh, probably making the team. It's just so exciting.
How do you, how do you, how do you, do you get called?
You get, uh, Coach takes you into a room and then you, she tells you, and sometimes like with other people.
Oh, that's cool.
Yeah. It's very scary.
It's gotta be emotional.
Yeah, I cried.
I bet. That's exciting.
Mm-hmm.
So we look forward to seeing you next year as well, right?
Yes.
Fantastic, congratulations.
Thank you.
Now, it's your choice. You can invite one of the moms or dads if you want to, wouldn't you? Hi there.
Hi.
And what's your name?
I'm CJ.
CJ or TJ?
CJ.
C, CJ?
CJ.
How do you spell that?
CJ.
Did you hear that?
I got it written down.
And what year in school are you?
Um, I'm going into my junior year too.
You are, okay.
Mm-hmm.
And you've been dancing for how long?
Um, I started when I was really young, probably like three, and then I stopped for a little bit and like did other sports, and then I started again, probably when I was like eight.
Really?
Yeah.
So you, you always had this, this pulling toward dance?
Yeah, I actually started again, cause I really liked the costumes, but.
Well, there you go. Now, that begs the question, the, the, is it, are they called costumes or outfits?
Costumes.
Okay, the costumes you wear. You make those, purchase those, lease those, what, how do you acquire those costumes?
So, um, it's kinda different for every team, but our team usually gets some custom made.
Really?
And last year, we actually got them made by Avery's mom.
Really?
Mm-hmm.
That's pretty cool.
Yeah, and then, um, we fundraise for them, and then we usually leave them at the school.
So they're, they're.
We don't keep them.
Okay, so they could be used again?
Yeah.
Depending on sizes or what have you?
Yeah.
Wow. What's your best memory?
Um, definitely winning state, but other than that, I think, um, I would probably say Disney too.
Yeah?
It was really fun, yeah.
So did you bust down to Disney, or did you fly?
We flew.
You did? Wow. And you stayed on the property?
Yeah.
You did?
Yeah.
So there's approximately twenty-some-odd dancers?
Yeah, like twenty-two, I think.
And what, five hundred chaperones? How long were you there?
Um, like five days.
My gosh, that's amazing. You fundraised for that as well, I assume?
Yeah, I think we just paid for it.
Oh, you did? The heck of selling popcorn, man, just gotta check and call it a day. Anything else you wanna share with the tens of thousands of people tuning in?
I don't know, it's just a really great team. I love it.
Well, I can tell.
Yeah.
We're delighted to have you, congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Hi.
And what is your name?
My name is Maddie.
Hi, Maddie, how are you?
I'm good, how are you?
And what year in school, Maddie?
I'm gonna be a senior.
You are?
Yes.
You see yourself up there?
Yep.
By the way, you're not the guy to the right.
Nope.
You know, this is being broadcast live.
Hi.
Nobody watches.
Okay.
And then you can watch it again, anytime you want to, on YouTube or the city's website, okay?
I'll do that.
But we can't do it over again, so.
Okay.
So are you ready?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So, how long have you been dancing, Maddie?
Um, I started when I was ten, and then I've been on the team, this will be my second year.
Okay. May I ask, did you try out for the team your freshman year?
Yes, I was on JV, which is still a great team, and I loved those years.
So you love dancing?
Yes.
Is that your favorite thing?
Yes.
Why is that?
Um, it's just fun, I get to dance with all my friends, that's how I met all my friends, and, um, it's just a good team, we all work really hard, so it's fun that we can work hard to go for a common goal.
Do you hear the crowd when you're dancing? Not, not last year, of course, but.
Yes.
You do?
Yes.
So you can hear the cheering, or mom or dad, or somebody yelling?
Yes, I always hear my mom.
Would you like to point your mother out?
Oh, that one.
That one? That may have been your mom's voice in the video that I heard.
Probably.
Probably, yeah. Is it easier to dance, and I think I know the answer, with a live crowd than?
For sure, yeah, definitely pumps us up, we hear each other, so, yeah.
Who chooses the music?
Coach. We normally have some sentimental meaning to them.
Oh, to Coach it does?
Yes.
No kidding?
Yeah, it's like my JV year, one of the songs, cause she also coaches JV, was her parents' wedding song.
Well, that's sweet. Very nice.
Yeah.
What's your favorite song? If you could choose a song and say, Coach, this song is what we're gonna dance to next year when I'm a senior.
I don't know.
Are you familiar with Barry Manilow?
No. You wanna put in a quest?
Not for Barry Manilow.
Okay.
Partridge Family?
No.
What do you listen to?
Um, today's top hits.
Which begs the question, what are today's top hits?
Um.
Lorde?
Um, Lord.
Lord?
Yeah, Lord.
Oh, I love Lord. That's a band.
That's a musician.
Well, it's a, she's big, she's big, Lord's big.
Yes, she is.
No kidding?
She's huge, yeah.
Wow.
Yeah, very good.
So compared to the Wiggles, is Lord?
I would say better.
Better?
Yeah.
Would you say better? Any thoughts of what you wanna do, uh, after high school?
Um, also nursing.
Really?
Yes.
What's this calling?
Um, I don't know, I love kids, I wanna do pediatric oncology like Kelly.
Oh, far out.
Yeah.
That's awesome. Do you wanna stay close to home, or just away from her?
No. My whole family lives in the south, so somewhere around there.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Whereabouts?
What, say again?
Whereabouts in the south?
Oh, my sister lives in Florida, I was, actually lived there before here, so somewhere around there. I'm also looking at Clemson, I toured that, really pretty.
Very cool.
Yes.
What message do you have for the young dancers?
Uh, keep working hard, hard work pays off. Yeah.
So you get to wear that ring and say, see, told ya, pays off.
Yep.
And, and I don't know this, so forgive me, but do you wear it on a certain finger?
No, it doesn't matter, any finger, yeah.
Okay, and you wear it, if you're not yet graduated, facing a certain way, or do you turn it a certain way?
I don't think it matters.
Cause that's what you did in high school, remember?
No.
Do you remember that? Yeah, you, you wore the number toward you, then when you graduated, you faced it to the world.
No, I don't think that matters.
Yeah, does anybody else remember that? See, there you go. You must be in your late seventies as well. Thank you very much for responding. Yeah, see, that's what you did, so that's cool. There's a lesson that you learned right there. Thank you for being here.
Thank you for having us.
Thanks for being a good sport, your choice. Lot of excitement here. Welcome.
Hi.
Hi there, what's your name?
Ally.
Ally? And what grade are you in, Ally?
I'm gonna be a senior.
You're gonna be a senior. And you've been dancing forever as well?
Kind of, yeah. I stopped for a while, like CJ did, so...
Why did you take a break?
I tried soccer, it didn't really work out, so... Yeah.
Just because nowadays, you really can't do a lot. You have to almost choose.
Yeah.
Which is interesting.
Yeah, because dance is all around, like the whole year, so I can't really do two sports, so...
This may sound like an odd question, but I'm genuinely interested. With respect to food and fuel to keep you going, is there a particular... Is it pizza, pasta, is it... What, Ho-Ho's, Twinkies, what is it?
Um, I don't really know. I can't, I'm kind of like gluten-free, so I can't eat a lot of bread.
Is that right?
Yeah.
Gluten-free?
Yeah.
Life is good, man.
Yeah.
Absolutely. Is there a favorite meal you have before a routine?
No.
No? Just whatever the heck's available.
Yep, I just look in the fridge and see what's there. Pack it in a bag and go.
And call it a day.
Yep.
Wow. So you're gonna be performing next year as well, dancing?
Yeah.
Win our tryouts for the team.
We already had them, they were in May.
Oh, you did?
They were in May.
Oh, heck, man.
Yeah.
So it's shoo-in.
Yep.
Life is good.
Last tryouts I'm over with, so...
You don't want, do you want to dance collegiate?
Mm-hmm.
You do?
Yeah.
Any thoughts of where you might want to go?
No, I'm probably gonna stay like in the area, so either Illinois or Iowa.
Nice.
But I don't know yet.
Very cool. Any idea what you want to study?
Elementary education.
Two teachers? A, uh... What's that?
Two nurses.
Yeah, several nurses. And somebody who takes care of their skin. That's cool. What's your favorite memory?
Um...
Besides winning state?
When I first made the team, I feel like everyone was just really welcoming.
Yeah.
So I'm usually like really quiet at first, but they kind of pulled me out of my shell and brought out this goofy side that everyone on the team has, so...
Is it unusual to be personally quiet, yet perform so publicly?
Yeah. I don't really like have to talk or do anything when I'm on stage, I kind of just dance. So I show my personality through the dancing.
That's pretty neat. And do you hear the crowd when you're dancing?
Yeah, I try to like focus on the team, though, and like stay in the moment.
Have you ever, in the middle of a dance, and this question's for everybody, and all of a sudden, instead of going left, you went right? But you're the only one who noticed?
Um, no. I kind of like drill in my brain what I'm supposed to do, so it just...
There's never been a moment where you went, "What the..."
Um, maybe a little bit, yeah.
But nobody else really notices?
Yeah. I think a lot of times, though, like people think they did like something worse than they actually did, so they have to watch a video back or something, so...
Well, it's kind of like being here on the council meeting, because it's all on tape, so...
I'll go home and watch it back and make sure I didn't do anything.
Sure you will. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Hi, Emma.
Hi. How are you?
I'm well, how are you?
Good.
And Emma, what grade are you in?
I'm gonna be a senior.
You're gonna be a senior.
Mm-hmm.
Was I in your class about a month ago?
In Urban Studies, yes.
Urban Studies, yeah, that's right.
I was afraid you were gonna tell the story about Italy and your daughter is named Emma.
I'm sorry to bore you. Yes, I'm thinking, I think you and I have had this conversation, because I remember when I first shared it with you, you went, "Shut up."
No, I didn't say that, exactly.
You said, "Who's the old guy talking about?" No, you didn't. But that is a good story, though.
Yeah.
Do you remember it?
No, I don't.
Okay, Emma, let's get this done with.
Okay.
You're gonna be a senior?
Yes.
How did you do in Sprat's class? What was your grade?
I got an A+.
Did you? You did a nice video.
Thank you.
Yeah, that was pretty cool.
Yeah, thank you.
I don't remember which one it was, but...
It was the one, you said you liked it.
I said that to everybody.
People don't remember!
Now, which one was it? Go ahead.
It was the one, I did it all in Island Park, and it was about like the nature in Geneva and how you need a break from the city, come to Geneva, through the metro.
So, you're on the team again?
Mm-hmm.
Life is good?
Yep.
You're gonna be the senior?
Yep.
You're gonna be welcoming younger dancers?
Mm-hmm.
What's so special about Emma that's gonna help everyone else be special and part of that team?
Um, I don't think it's just me, I think all the, the whole senior class, there's eight of us this year, and we all work really well together, and we all, I think we all bring things, like different things in the team. Like, some of us are better at like explaining choreography and teaching new things to the girls who just joined the team, or some of us are better at like getting them to get out of their shell or like socializing with them, so I think it's like, no, it's not just me. I can't take all the credit.
Eight seniors next year, that's a, that's a big group of seniors.
Yeah.
Is that the most...
Um...
...in recent memory?
Yes.
It is?
I think, I think it's eight.
Wow.
There's seven?
There was seven, actually.
There was seven last year, so...
And eight's bigger than seven?
Yeah, just by the one.
Oh, Mr. Sprat just texted saying, "Give her a C."
Mr. Sprat was a social studies teacher.
What's that?
Miss, Mr. Sprat was a social studies teacher. Mrs. Oxler would be very disappointed in me right now. Yeah.
What, what course does she teach?
She teaches algebra II, and then I'm gonna be in her AP Stats next year, so...
AP Stats?
Yep.
Cool. What the hell's that? Yeah, I don't want to know. So, your favorite memory, Emma, besides this year?
Besides this year? Um... My favorite memory is, we have a lot of team dinners before, or either before like football games or before competitions, and those are always really fun, because we just like go to someone's house and like have like a big pot of lasagna, and like just go ham.
Downtime, right?
Yeah. And that's like when we have like the most fun, because practices are like hard, and we're allowed to be like goofy in practice, but like to an extent.
When you're having these dinners, do you talk about anything but dance?
Yeah, because usually we're, we come from practice, or we're going to practice after, so we're like, "I don't want to talk about dance anymore, I don't want to think about it, I'm tired."
You know you're on camera, right?
Yeah.
Where's the Emma name come from?
Is it Florence?
No, it's not Florence, my other daughter's name is Florence, by the way.
Oh.
No, it comes from a little town named Luca in Italy. It's a walled city.
Have you seen that, you need to watch that movie. There's a movie named Luca now.
I know. I have not... But I have not, is it good?
Yeah, it's really good.
Is it good?
Yeah.
I'll take my grandkids, they'll see that, yeah.
Okay.
That'd be good. What else, what else do you want to share with the world?
What do you want to share? It's your board meeting.
Yeah, spelled B-O-R-E-D. Well, I want to share how proud I am of you.
Thank you.
And all of your teammates, so... Are you the last one to stand up and speak?
Uh, no.
Good. Emma, choose the next victim.
Ally.
Is it Ally or Ellie?
Ally.
Ally, how are you?
I'm good, how are you?
And what year are you, Ally?
I'm going to be a senior.
You're gonna be a senior, so one of the eight.
No, actually, I'm not gonna be continuing next year, it was hard, but...
Oh, no kidding?
Yeah.
Just gonna focus on life and studies?
Yeah, I was thinking that, um, I'm gonna be more busy, and I couldn't put the team first, and I didn't think that was fair to them, or Coach, so...
Yeah.
It was sad, but I know they're gonna do great.
It's a mature decision, and congratulations on reaching that decision.
Thank you.
Wow. So, this year was something else, though, huh?
Yeah, it was really amazing. It was my first year on varsity, and then I had been on JV for three years before that. And it was just really cool, it was just such a different year.
Yeah.
Um, and I was just really grateful for everything, every experience, every competition, every practice, just that we were actually together.
Right.
Even every team meeting, it was, at least we were doing something. It was nice to work together and then see how far we came.
That's pretty cool. And the ring fits well, right?
Yes, I love it.
So what do you do with the medal eventually? Do you get a frame and a shadow box?
I've had mine hanging up on my wall, but we take it down for pictures.
I bet, that's cool. So, senior year, you're gonna be busy.
Yeah, just working and stuff like that.
Where do you work?
Um, I do a lot of babysitting.
Ah.
I actually think I'm leaning towards going into elementary teaching as well.
Is that right? Even after being with all those kids all that time?
Yeah, I just love working with kids and stuff like that.
Any thoughts of where you want to maybe go to school, or?
Um, I'm looking at Kansas, Mizzou.
Mizzou?
Yeah, my sister went there, so...
Is that right?
Mm-hmm.
That's where Mr. Burns went.
Oh, really? Oh, yes, I knew that.
Took him eight years.
I had him as a tutor.
Literally. So what message do you have, because you're a unique individual, you've made a very powerful decision.
Thank you.
That's best for you, and that's awful mature, very cool.
Um, I don't, I just think that... I don't know, I just thought about it carefully, and I loved, since freshman year, our dance team has been such an amazing experience, and all my friends have been on it, and I just had to move on with the next chapter in my life, though.
Fantastic. And your favorite memory?
Um, honestly, it's probably going to Florida as well. Uh, it was really cool, because we went during New Year's Eve.
Oh, it is cool.
And so, we were in Hollywood Arts, or Hollywood Studios.
Yeah.
Hollywood Studios, and, um, we started the new year together, so that was really cool.
That is cool, very cool.
Yeah.
Congratulations to you.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you for having us.
You're very welcome. Your choice, who's next, if there's anyone next? Is that it?
Yeah.
Moms and dads, you want anything? If you'd like, by all means. We have one other item on the agenda tonight, and that's to annex Potavia. Would you ladies like to come up here and unveil something for us? Well, everyone, but Emma. Get it, Emma. Yeah, if you guys could all huddle around so nobody can see it, that'd be great. Whenever you're ready, ladies, be very careful, okay, because that cost the city like nine bucks. And the back of it reads, "Slow down." We're gonna have that posted. Actually, I usually ask the coach, "Where should we like this posted?" The coach will advise me as to where we want this posted, somewhere in the city. And then we leave it up for media. Everything spelled correctly?
Yep.
Light is good. May I take a photo with you?
Yeah.
Do you want to put it in the middle? Ladies, want to carry the sign over here with the easel? I stay out of here. Ladies, do you want to take the sign with you? Is that what you want? Otherwise, I'll put it to the coach. Everybody want it? Okay, folks, thank you very much for indulging and celebrating with the dance team. Item four, amendments to the agenda, are there any amendments this evening? Item five is the omnibus agenda, all items marked with an asterisk are considered to be routine, and they can be considered and acted upon with one motion. Is there such a motion? Alderman Swanson makes that motion. Seconded by Alderman Maladra. Whenever you're ready, Mr. Clerk, please take the roll.
Bruno?
Aye.
Burkhart?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Kassrog?
Kassrog, aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
Marks?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
The omnibus agenda has been adopted and passed and approved with eight affirmative votes and two absent. Item number nine A, consider approval of special event application from the Geneva Chamber of Commerce for the Geneva Arts Fair July 24 and 25, including the use of public right-of-way and city services. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Alderman Bruno makes the motion, Alderman Mayor makes the second. Anything you want to add, Stephanie, prior to our consideration?
It's pretty self-explanatory, um, I would note that Paula from the chamber is here this evening, as well as Director Timoshenko, if there's any additional questions.
Any questions for Ms. Schmidt? Do you want to come up and say a few words, Paula, or no? You good?
I don't know if I can follow back.
Are you a state champion?
Well, thank you for having me here tonight. Um, I think it's basically the same arts fair that we normally have. I think we're spreading it out a little bit, um, ten feet apart in most of the tents now, uh, just for a little social distancing. Um, we are not putting the tents near any of our food vendors, uh, so, so we can all still enjoy the food. Um, and I think we have a few less artists, so I think it's down to 120 instead of 150 so that we could fit them downtown. A little bit different, planscapes doing a little different, um, in the middle for us this year, so they usually do that very intense landscaping, they're just doing something in the middle this year. So, I think it's basically pretty much the same thing, it's gonna be great. Always a top-ten rated in the area.
It's a great event.
Bring some great people down.
With that, ladies and gentlemen, we have a motion, we have a second. I'm gonna ask for a roll call on this one, since we are expending city services and using right-of-way, so whenever the clerk is ready, please take the roll.
Burkhart?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Kassrog?
Kassrog, aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
Marks?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bruno?
Aye.
Item nine A has been adopted with eight affirmative votes, zero nay votes, and two absent. Yes. Item 10, municipal bills for payment, we kindly ask our clerk to read the bills in their aggregate for our consideration.
Total bills are $4,113,869.79.
Mayor, I move that we approve and pay the bills as read. The individual items that add up to that amount can be found on the city website in tonight's city council packet.
Alderman Bruno makes the motion to pay the bills that have been presented, which also appear on the city's website and in our council packets. Is there a second? Alderwoman Burkhart makes the second.
Nope.
Whoops. Any questions, any comments? Mr. Clerk, please take the roll.
Ruby?
Aye.
Kassrog?
Kassrog, aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
Marks?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bruno?
Aye.
Burkhart?
Aye.
We skipped out, oh, excuse me, with eight yes votes, two absent, and zero nay votes, the bills have been approved. Item 12A, consider approval of resolution number 2021-55, approving a four-year collective bargaining agreement between the City of Geneva and the Geneva Professional Firefighters Association, Local 4287. Is there a motion? Motion by Alderwoman Burkhart, seconded by Alderman Marks. Ms. Dawkins, anything you'd like to add?
Sure, so this is a successor collective bargaining agreement, as stated, with the Geneva Professional Firefighters Association and the City of Geneva. The agreement was presented, was finalized following eighteen months of negotiations, culminating in a mediation session with an arbitrator this past June. The agreement is for four years, which would have started May 1, 2020, through April 30, 2024, and includes wage increases of 2.5% each year of the contract. There were additional economic and non-economic provisions that are described in your packet this evening. Um, per the arbitrator's award, all terms of the contract are retroactive to effective May 1, 2020. And this evening, we have Fire Chief Antonori and Assistant City Administrator McCready to answer any additional questions.
Are there any questions for either Ms. Dawkins, Mr. McCready, or Chief Antonori? Is there anyone online that has their hand raised regarding this issue?
Can we have one issue? We have no one with their hand... Apologies, we have no one with their hands raised at this time.
Mr. Clerk, please take the roll.
Kassrog?
Kassrog, aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
Marks?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bruno?
Aye.
Burkhart?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
With eight affirmative votes, zero nay votes, and two absent, item 12A has been adopted. Item 12B, folks, is, consider approval of resolution number 2021-56, authorizing execution of an affordable housing agreement between ELA LLC and the City of Geneva related to the Emma's Landing subdivision. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Alderman Mayor makes the motion?
Second.
Seconded by Alderwoman Ruby. Ms. Dawkins?
Sure. The approval of the affordable, um, housing agreement satisfies the closing and transfer of title condition in the real estate purchase agreement, as well as the condition of the planned unit development approval from Ordinance 2021-03 relating to the Emma's Landing subdivision. The agreement requires affordability restrictions to remain in place for a minimum of 15 years in exchange for a partial waiver of the city building permit and inspection fees, water and sanitary sewer connection fees. Uh, the agreement will not be tendered to the purchaser until the closing has occurred, which is anticipated to happen later this month. Um, I do know we have Director DeGroot present with us this evening. Um, also online is Tracy Manning from the Burton Foundation, so if you have any questions, you may address either of them.
Questions or comments from the dais, and then I'll ask our Alderman Kassrog if he has any questions or comments. Seeing none, sensing none, Alderman Kassrog, sir? Any questions?
Sir, thank you, Mayor, I do have a couple of questions.
Yes, sir.
Um, the first one, I think, would be for, uh, Ms. Manning. I certainly understand, uh, ELA LLC, but then there's also Emma's Landing GP LLC, and then, of course, Burton Foundation and other named people, um, in the contract. I was wondering if you could just give us a lay of the land on what these LLCs are for and what function they provide for the Burton Foundation?
Tracy, if you can unmute it.
I'm here, hello, everyone, thank you for talking with us tonight. ELA LLC, if you can imagine, an upside-down pyramid. That's the big corporation between the investors and us as the developer. That's ELA LLC, that's all the partnership, that's all of the owners within one partner, within one LLC. Emma's Landing GP LLC is the single asset entity that's created to own this specific development, so it's separate and apart from the Burton Foundation and every other development, uh, in our portfolio. Then Emma's Landing is the development itself. So, the Burton Foundation is 100% owner and member of Emma's Landing GP LLC, and then Emma's Land, I'm sorry, and then ELA LLC is the joint ownership between, and partnership between, the investor and us. This is the structure for every development financed this way.
Okay, and then, I think, was it Hudson Partners or something like that was also listed?
Hudson is the investor, and so, from a syndicator's perspective, having been working with syndicators in my past, they create a fund, either with multiple investors or a single fund for a guaranteed fund for one investor, and what they do is, they will take one large fund and have, um, several Fortune 500 companies investing in that particular fund. And so Hudson is the syndicator for the development, and they find the investors for this particular property. So that's who Hudson is, they're the syndicator between the investors, who are private, and the developer.
Great, uh, that was very helpful, I appreciate it, Ms. Manning. Um, I did have just one other question for you. In this agreement, you agree to give, to provide your, um, annual statement to the City of Geneva on your fiscal year. I was wondering what your fiscal year was.
We were, the Burton Foundation agreed to give our financials, is that what you're saying?
Well, I believe it's related to Emma's Landing, not the Burton Foundation. So I'm not sure if it's ELA or EL, or Emma's Landing GP.
Well, those entities are created, but there is no activity in those developments because we have not closed on Emma's Landing, the development. So there's no activity in either one of those, those are newly created entities for this specific development.
What I was referring to, I'm not sure if we're referring to the same thing, was that, um, let me pull up the, uh, agreement here, but it, it's not now, it's in the future, uh, that you're gonna provide financial information going down the road. And that's what I was asking, um, well, let me just ask you, which organization is that? Emma's ELA?
ELA LLC, yes. And sure, once we start, once we lease up and we start that first year, every year financials, we can share with the city.
And I was just asking what that, what that fiscal year was, is it just a regular calendar year?
Well, um, Hudson actually has a different, um, fiscal year, so Peter, you could raise your hand, but I believe it's October 31 of every year, as opposed to 12/31.
Okay. All right, I think that's it for me now, thank you, Ms. Manning.
You're welcome.
You guys step for us?
Yeah. Mr. Quigley, I see that you have your hand raised, I didn't know if you wanted to add to what Ms. Bur- what's Manning said, sorry. Mr. Quigley, did you want to speak? You're on mute?
Oh, can you hear me now?
Yes, sir.
Oh, good, I, I, no, 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 I was just following up on what Tracy said. I didn't know if it was clear that the fiscal year that they're using for this project is different than other projects, and it's based on the fiscal year of the investor that they wanted. that they wanted. Normally, the fiscal year for all of the projects, and I think all of other Tracy's projects, is the, just the general fiscal year ending December 31st. That was all.
Questions for either professional staff or Ms. Manning or Mr. Quigley? Public comment's a public comment. Yeah. No, we'll do that under public comment. Mr. Clerk, if you're ready, please take the roll.
Aye.
Marx.
Aye.
Mayor.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Bruno.
Aye.
Burkhart.
Aye.
Ruby.
Aye.
And Casarag.
Aye.
With a vote of eight in the affirmative, zero in the negative, and two absent, Item 12B has been adopted and approved. We're at Item 13, ladies and gentlemen. Public comment, new business. First, we will consider public comment without objection. I will ask Mr. McCready if there's anyone online who wishes to address the council.
We do have two individuals with their hands raised. I will unmute the first individual at this time. Ms. McCall, I am unmuting your microphone.
Hi, sorry, I actually had my hand raised because I had just a couple of questions, but you are, seems that you've already passed it. But I guess just for the public record regarding the Burton Foundation, thank you, Alderman Casarag. I think you answer or asked the questions that I was wondering about, but just as a few follow-ups, and I don't know if I can get responses to this, but I didn't know if it was common practice for all of the Burton Foundation properties to have multiple LLCs, and my question about that was, is by having these LLCs, does that then make these for-profit developments when you're a nonprofit foundation? So I just had a question about that. Secondly, just as far as with the Hudson Capital, I was just looking at their website, and I did notice that they do have account managers that are tasked with lease-ups, so I didn't know if it's the Burton Foundation, ELA LLC, or Emma's Landing GP that would be in charge of the lease-up for this property. Once again, just something that was top of mind. And lastly, for clarification on who was providing the financials to the City of Geneva, if it was Hudson, I noticed in the public comment that there was an SEC filing for their lack of providing financial agreements, so I am happy that the city is requiring that, and I hope that that is something that we continue to do each year. And lastly, was just an outstanding question for Ms. Manning. As of yesterday, both ELA LLC and Emma's Landing GP were both not in good standing with the state of Illinois. It looks like somehow today they are active, so I was just curious as to why from July 1st to July 5th, ELA LLC and Emma's Landing GP were in not-good standing. So those are just my comments for the public record. Like I said, I was hoping to have those questions answered before it passed, but that's all I got. Thank you.
Mr. McCready?
And Mr. Nelson? Mr. Rodney Nelson, you've been unmuted.
Thank you. Like the previous speaker, I was hoping to maybe get a few words in edgewise before the vote, but I understand your, your procedures were followed. I'm not complaining about that, I was just hoping. I am very concerned about the SEC fines for Hudson Capital Housing. What I find so frustrating is that you're operating under your standard operating procedure where this agreement first appeared for public review in the waning minutes leading into a long holiday weekend. Also, just as in preceding actions, new characters appear without any introduction. One such example is the NAD Hudson Capital Housing LLC. I would have liked to have had a little more time to delve a little further into that SEC complaint and kind of parse that with the unacceptable behaviors that are listed in Page 56 of the Qualified Application Plan of IDA. These things for the, for the individual but interested citizen becomes impossible in a timeframe that doesn't allow for any kind of FOIA action or gathering any additional information. Back in the era of snail mail, Winston Churchill observed that a lie gets halfway around the world before the truth has a chance to get its pants on. Today, a lie orbits the world a dozen times while the truth is still even just looking for its pants. I got the message that this agenda was available on the same day in July, that I got a partial denial for my IDA request for some other information related to Emma's Landing. I've already filed the appeal with the Attorney General's Office on that point. My last similar appeal under nearly identical circumstances of a City of Geneva FOIA denial resulted in a three-month delay until the Attorney General, in a binding opinion, ruled that Geneva erred in its denial. I'm still searching for the authority upon which the 60-day extension of Emma's governmental contingency was based. It seems transparency, you are both unknown and unwelcome in the City of Geneva. In the scant and redacted material that I did receive from IDA was a copy of the Plath of Emma's Planned Unit Development referenced in tonight's action item. Curiously, but not in any way surprisingly, the second page of the IDA copy was blank. There was not even a single signature, even though the PUD document was officially recorded months ago with the mayor's signature on Page 2, along with a number of other signatures of Geneva officials. Even though I asked for all the relevant documents from IDA, the signed and recorded copy I sent to IDA weeks prior was not included in my own FOIA requested documents, which brings me back to the confusion related to that requirement, and makes me wish that you had held off until this, this confusion could be resolved. You haven't helped me with it in any way, you haven't communicated in any way, but I needed more time to try to figure out what this was all about. I refer to the fact that that recorded PUD lists an individual who's not a party to the transactions that we've been describing here today, and nor will, I believe, that person be involved in the closing. I checked again today, the officially recorded PUD in the Kane County Recorder's Office still lists a person as the, and swear that this person has certified that she is the owner of the Plath in question, the parcel number in question. The Emma's Landing appears on the PUD plan under that same number. I don't understand the signatures, I don't understand the confusion. It seems like that person was a placeholder. I don't expect any answers tonight, but I'm still confused about that. It seems the City of Geneva is hell-bent on spending its way to affordability. The city has its own financial scorecard that is synced up to its political agenda. The character of its partners is immaterial. Rules are made to be selectively broken. Those who are taxed out of town, like seniors and lower-income householders, will not vote in the next election. The resulting virtues of this profligate spending, if any, will be in the eyes of some select surviving beholders. Please find and don your grown-up pants. Slow the train down to all deliberate speed and pull back on the throttle so honest and unbiased deliberation can occur in the bright light of full transparency. You should not have passed this agreement until you have done your own investigation into the participants, including Hudson Housing, as described on Page 56 of the IDA QAP Plan and entitled, quote, "unacceptable practices," close quote.
There being nobody else online wishing to provide public comment, is there any new business from the council members this evening? Alderman Casarag, anything for you, sir?
Nothing, Mayor, thank you for asking.
I have one bit of news that may very well please our officer, and perhaps you're even surprised. This is from Jerry Black. Does everyone know who Jerry Black is? Former 911 TRICOM director. Yesterday, July 4th, the 911 system in the tri-cities turned 45 years old. Isn't that something? We had 24 different emergency numbers to dial in the tri-cities prior to that system being put in place. I'll forward you all this email, too, with some cool photos, but yeah, pretty cool. And Jerry's one of the local historians who knows his stuff, so 911. With that, ladies and gentlemen, a motion to adjourn this council meeting is in order. Alderman Swanson makes the motion. Roll call vote, please, to adjourn the meeting. Just for fun.
Marx.
Aye.
That's true.
True, are you through?
No, I have to roll call because Alderman Casarag's virtual, so forgive me.
I'm just kidding.
That's right.
Mayor?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bruno?
Aye.
Burkhart?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Casarag?
Casarag, aye.
Malodra?
Aye.
Give us a second, folks, we'll transition over to the Committee of the Whole. Ladies and gentlemen, tonight's Committee of the Whole meeting is called to order. Let the record show that eight of the council members are present, one being virtually, two are absent. Items of business, folks, Item 2, approve the minutes from the June 14, 2021 Committee of the Whole meeting, continued from June 7th, and the June 21st, 2021 Committee of the Whole meeting. Is there a motion? Alderwoman Ruby makes the motion.
Second.
And Alderwoman Burkhart makes the second. All in favor of approving the minutes? Please indicate by saying aye.
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 Anyone opposed?
Aye.
Eight in the affirmative, two absent. Items of business, folks, Item 3A, consider approval of draft resolution authorizing the purchase of a Bobcat Skidster Model 576. That's, that's a good model. With armchair attachment, no, with attachments and trailer in an amount not to exceed $103,528 from Atlas Bobcat.
So moved.
Motion by Alderman Bruno.
Second.
Seconded by Alderwoman Burkhart. Ms. Dawkins?
Okay. So the fiscal year '22 budget included the replacement of a 1998 K skid loader due to its years in service and number of repairs that have been made to the vehicle on an annual basis. The city uses the skid loader for road repairs, snow removal, and loading and site restoration work. After thorough research and testing, staff has found Bobcat to be the most suitable for the city's needs. The Bobcat skid loader comes with several attachments, making the equipment extremely versatile. The recommendation is to purchase the Bobcat skid loader with attachments and trailer from Atlas Bobcat at a cost not to exceed $103,528 using the Sourcewell contract. We do have Superintendent Landers online with us this evening if you have any additional questions.
Any questions for the superintendent? Mr. Landers? Seeing none, sensing none? All in favor of this item? Item 3A, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Please say nay. With eight affirmative votes and two absent, this matter is advanced to the City Council for further consideration. Item 3B, consider draft resolution authorizing the execution of a labor contract for the 2021-2022 underground electric cable replacement with Utility Dynamics in an amount not to Alderman Mayor makes the motion. Alderwoman Ruby makes the second. Ms. Dawkins?
Okay, so we had three bids that were received for the labor contract for the underground electric replacement contract work to take place in the Meadowlark subdivision, which is at Lark Street, as well as along East Side Drive between Geneva Drive and Division Street. Utility Dynamics was the low bidder. We do have Superintendent Holton on the line in case you have any additional questions.
Questions for the superintendent? Aaron Holton? Anyone in the dais? Alderman Casarag?
I did have one quick question.
Yes, sir.
Is any of the cable being replaced going from overhead to under, underground?
No, it's all existing underground cable that's, in the, in the Meadowlark subdivision, it's old cable that's been in the ground for 25, 30 years, just going to get replaced. The section between, on East Side Drive between Geneva Drive and Division is actually new underground cable we're installing. That's going to close a loop for us to be able to feed Division Street from the south.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Anyone else? We have a motion and a second. All in favor of Item 12B? Please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The enthusiasm from Casarag is unbelievable, actually. With eight affirmative, two absent, this matter is advanced to the City Council. Well done, Brett. Item 12C, consider draft resolution adopting IDA's Form BLR 14220, supplemental resolution for maintenance of roads for the 2020-2021 project year.
So moved.
Alderman Bruno makes the motion.
Second.
Seconded by Alderwoman Burkhart. Ms. Dawkins?
Okay, so the City Council adopted Resolution 2020-37 in June of 2020, authorizing the expenditure of $614,178.70 in motor fuel tax funds for fiscal year '21. In preparing the final expenditure project reports for IDA, it was determined that actual funds expended totaled $730,396.28. Therefore, a supplemental resolution is necessary to balance the project. For your consideration this evening, are the requisite supplemental forms required? And we do have Director Babica on the line if you have any additional questions.
Questions for Director Babica? BLR Form 14220, often unrecognized and unappreciated.
It's one of the best forms.
It's really one of the best forms.
Very, very rad.
All in favor of Item 12C? Please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? With eight in the affirmative, two in the absent category, this matter is advanced to the council. Folks, Mr. McCready, public comment? Anyone joining us wishes to address the council?
No one with their hands raised at this time, Mayor.
New business from the dais? With that, ladies and, oops, yes.
I was waiting till you made sure nobody else.
Oh.
So I have new business.
Oh, you do? All yours.
So as you all may be aware, the energy legislation is still being debated, drafted, redrafted, debated. I don't know what else is going on, but one of the questions that came up is that there have been a lot of different groups forming and a lot of different things going on, and the city doesn't have representation per se at the table, so I'm just asking this evening if there's any interest in the council in having a seat at the table, which would require expending funds for a lobbyist, something that other cities have chosen to do. But again, and I don't know if Ron, if you want to speak to it all, just knowing the process of how it works in Springfield, we have been talking to our legislators, we have been sending the letters, we have been doing all of the things and keeping you apprised, but the question has come up as to whether or not, I think Batavia is looking to hire a lobbyist. I know that Rochelle is hiring a lobbyist, and the question was whether or not Geneva would be interested in doing the same, so. And tonight, again, I'm not looking for a formal action, I'm just trying to decide whether or not we look to engage somebody or not. I do have a person who would be a good source to do that, and I'm sure the next question is what that would cost, and it runs about $6,500 a month, so.
Is NIPA having a lobbyist since Rochelle and Batavia on it, or are they just doing that?
No, I believe NIPA is, is hiring their own lobbyists to represent NIPA as the, as its agency, but there are some differences between all three cities, even though we're all part of NIPA. We do each have our own kind of, you know, we have a generation facility that Batavia does not, Batavia gets more energy than Geneva, those kinds of things, so again.
I was just going to ask if there was any possibility of collaboration between the three cities, Geneva, Batavia, and Rochelle, but you, I think you just answered that.
I mean, you know, I think there's always that opportunity, but the question is, is really, do, you know, first and foremost, you probably want to look out for your interests, but certainly there, I mean, and you can speak to that. I'll let Ron speak, just because, again, he knows this.
So I, I think there are interesting opportunities where interests align, but there are distinct instances where Geneva's interests are separate and apart from even NIPA, let alone Batavia and Rochelle. As City Administrator Dawkins said, Rochelle has already hired a lobbyist. To what level, what extent, I don't know. Batavia's entertaining the thought, the concept. It, it doesn't make necessary any sense to hire one for all three because of the differences in contracts, perspectives, and again, the interests don't fully and completely align, even though there may be some considerable overlap. I don't know if that answers your question, but that's certainly at least the prevailing perspective.
Sure, and also, what, what sort of impact do you think having a lobbyist would make?
That's a great question. I don't know, I can't tell you anything specifically. All All I can say is that discussions are going on now, and the city of Geneva is relying on others to tell us what is being said and done. And we don't have a direct passage towards decision-makers, other than us calling our legislators, which is fine. You know the old adage, right? You're either at the table or on the menu, and whether we're at the table or on the menu is, I guess, something for this tribunal to determine.
Thank you.
Well, I'm certainly not opposed to it, but honestly, I don't really have a sense of what that would look like and what advantage that might bring to us. I don't know how...
We could bring someone in that could offer specifics if that would be helpful.
Yeah, I mean, again, this was more of an exploratory because we didn't want to go down this path if there wasn't interest, but if there is interest, then we can certainly reach out and have someone come and speak to the council.
Well, it's... We're certainly... We've discussed this, there's a lot going on, we have specific interests in this legislation. I don't want to throw money away, but it seems that it's been fairly convoluted and scattershot as to how we do make... How we do communicate with the decision-makers there. So it... At one level, it seems appealing, but yeah, so I'd like to know more. Thanks.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I just wanted to say, I mean, this is perhaps the most important legislation in terms of impacting us and our financial future. So I think I definitely am open to it, want to hear more. I think we are, and this is the city attorney said, you know, you kind of have to look out for yourself, and we do have unique... Our situation is unique compared to other communities, that their situation is unique compared to ours. So I certainly would be of the inclination to... It's also not... It's not like you're signing an 18-month contract. I assume, you know, it's limited or could be limited, so I would be leaning toward something. So thanks.
Alderman Kostrog?
I guess I'm interested too, for sure, if somebody can come in and answer questions, but I guess I thought from the legislative update dinner that we went to, and maybe even with what City Administrator Dawkins had, that it was... It's kind of towards the tail end of it. So I'm just wondering, by the time we implement it, by the time we give them direction, is there really time to affect the outcome? Or are we just looking for inside information? Not inside information, but direct access to information.
That's a good point.
Is it my turn?
Yes.
Okay.
Excuse me.
So, I mean, I just came on to this issue in May, and I can see, just from the little bit that I know about it, that it's probably one of the most important issues that we're facing. And I think I've even asked if we had a lobbyist. I think we should have a lobbyist. I think that this has so much... So much impact on us in the future that we should do everything we can to get the right outcome for Geneva.
Alderman Swanson?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to hear what a lobbyist could do for us before we make any decision, but to pay money to get information firsthand or quicker seems not money well spent. So I would prefer to hear what exactly they're going to provide for the $6,500 or whatever that amount is before we make a decision. But I'm open to hearing that presentation. Thank you.
I would just comment on Kostrog... Alderman Kostrog. So while we often hear legislation is close to the end, we have found that that means different... Many different things to many different people. So I would say that, yes, at that point in time, I think they thought they were close to making some kind of settlement or agreement or whatever, but I've heard literally nothing since, which tells me that they're probably further apart than we were led to believe that they were together. And just various articles that I've read, again, there are a bunch of different factions, I think, coming together to kind of hash this out. So I don't really know where we're at as far as whether it's going to happen, come back this summer, or whether it'll be veto session in the fall.
Yeah, my guess is that we do have consensus to secure at least additional information, including but not limited to someone coming in to visit with us. Okay. With that, ladies and gentlemen, I'll entertain a motion to go into closed session on the purchase or lease of real property for the use of the public body. Is there a motion? Motion by Alderman Marx. Seconded by Alderman Swanson. Roll call vote be in order. Whenever you're ready, Mr. Clerk.
Bruno.
Aye.
Burkhart.
Aye.
Ruby.
Aye.
Kostrog.
Kostrog, aye.
Maladra. Marx.
Aye.
Mayor.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
We are back in open session.
We have to... We have to make a motion.
Entertain a motion to return to open session. Alderman Marx makes the motion. Alderman Mayor makes the second. Roll call vote is in order.
Burkhart.
Aye.
Ruby.
Aye.
Kostrog.
Aye.
Maladra.
Kostrog, aye.
Marx.
Aye.
Mayor.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Bruno.
Aye.
And that's it.
We're back in open session, folks. Anything else for the benefit of the community? If not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the Committee of the Whole meeting. So adjourned. Alderman Marx makes the motion. Mr. Clerk, whenever you're ready, please take the roll call.
Ruby.
Aye.
Kostrog.
Kostrog, aye.
Maladra.
Aye.
Marx.
Aye.
Mayor.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Bruno.
Aye.
Burkhart.
Aye.
We're adjourned, folks. Happy sixth.
Bye, everybody.